Okay, it's 6:30. Are we ready to call this meeting to order? Are we ready? Let's go. Dean Fox, here.
Steve Owen.
Here.
Jerry Baron.
Here.
Jennifer Blum.
Here.
Will Segway.
Here.
Steve Sylvia.
Here.
Great, and we also have here our, I hope I don't mess these names up, but our new student reps, Boston Paquette, did I say it right?
Yes.
Oh, yes, but this one's even worse. Katie Wizniewski.
Wizneski.
Wizniewski. Okay, so happy to have you here. Would you please join me in the pledge of allegiance? Which is over there. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Is there anyone here for, oh, other than Lakeville, is anyone else recording the meeting? Oh, okay, thank you. Anyone here for public participation? Are you here for public participation?
Yes.
Okay, if you could just go to the podium and tell us your name and your town and keep it to three minutes, we would greatly appreciate it. Thank you.
Can I take this down?
Sure. It's hard, the glass is foggy.
I know, I can't do with glasses. So I did print out some documents. So my name is Julie O'Brien. I have two girls in the middle school. So, let me start by, so by note, I wanted to kind of address some of the issues that have been happening with some of the policies as far as the children and the protocol with the vaccinated versus unvaccinated testing. So I wanted to, by no means do I believe that I know more than anyone in the medical field, and I understand that there's many issues in your hands may be tied with DESE requirements, but many of us have concerns with some of the protocols that lack transparency going in with them. My husband, who couldn't be here tonight, has worked in pharmaceuticals and biotech for almost 25 years. He has a degree in microbiology and a master's in regulatory affairs. He currently runs several quality control operations in the U.S. and Portugal, and last year was working with a company who was making the COVID vaccine that is not yet to market. He has dealt directly with the FDA several times to bring new drugs to market. I myself participated in the Novavax clinical trial for their protein-based COVID vaccine. I am only stating this so you know that we are a family, we are not a family against vaccines, and my husband is very aware of both the science and the FDA regulatory requirements. Last week, 42% of all cases in Massachusetts were from fully vaccinated people. I have been tracking this data since mid-July, when Massachusetts started reporting on it, and the rate has been slowly increasing each week. While I know this is not widely publicized data, it is there on mass.gov site for everyone should they want to look. I have included the links and the data in the documents I've given you. With that being said, I'd like to know why, if 42% of all cases in Massachusetts last week were from fully vaccinated people, why are we only testing the unvaccinated children if they are a close contact? In late July, Dr. Fauci, in an interview with MSNBC, stated, and I quote, "With the Delta variant, that has changed the entire landscape, because when you look at the level of virus in the nasopharynx of a vaccinated person who gets a breakthrough infection with Delta, it is the same level of virus in an unvaccinated person who's infected." Dr. Rochelle Walensky, the director of the CDC, stated August 5th in an interview that they, the vaccine, continue to work well for Delta with regards to severe illness and death. They prevent it, but what they cannot do anymore is prevent transmission. Knowing this, and that 42% of all cases last week in Massachusetts were from fully vaccinated people, how is there any science behind only testing unvaccinated students if they are a close contact? I can answer this for you, and there is none. Additionally, forcing children who are unvaccinated in a close contact to be in another room or a special location in the cafeteria is not only discriminatory, but also allows other students to know their vaccination status. Witness violates some form of HIPAA or FERPA privacy law? While I know DESE has pushed back their mask mandate until November 1st, I am aware that as of October 15th, those schools with over 80% vaccination rate may unmask only vaccinated children and staff. Again, I ask, with 42% of cases in Massachusetts being from fully vaccinated people last week, where is the science again? Yet again, there is none. I do hope, if this is the case, you all as a school board realize this is the sheer definition of segregation and discrimination, and I believe there will be many like me who either take legal action or pull their children from the school district. Many of us would like a greater level of transparency when it comes to protocol. I feel we need more thorough documentation of what will happen at each school in regards to the test and stay policy, so we as parents can make an informed decision as to whether to not descend our children, should they be a close contact. We all want what's best for our children, and we love our small town and the school district. And I realize many of you probably feel the same way I do, but yet you feel like your hands are tied. I just hope when it comes down to it, you guys do fight for us and for our kids.
Thank you very much. I don't know, Mr. Madiris, have any comment?
Mrs. Fox, if I may, I am going to touch upon a few of these items in my school reopening. I'd rather capture it at that time.
Fine.
So they will certainly be addressed. And I know this committee, on occasion, when people have been in attendance, have been permitted to ask an additional follow-up question. So I think I will be able to address that.
Okay.
I did provide you the DESI protocol.
Yes, you did.
It's being adhered to and followed at all the schools. And I'll make reference to that, it's a public document, but I'll speak to that. I think if it's okay, I'd rather not take it out of context.
That's fine, that part of the agenda, okay.
As it relates, I guess I would note, though, the reference to the vaccination, the October 15th, still remains a local decision.
Yeah.
So the state indicated for those districts that avail themselves of that threshold, if they meet that threshold or that ramp off as the state left it, they did not mandate that. They simply said that there would be a local decision that should be made by the district in consult with the Board of Health. So there is that local opportunity, if and when that rate or that threshold is met. So it's not a simple requirement as the mask is. There's a distinction I just want to make there.
It's not in one way or the other, okay.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you. And again, if you could just give us your name and your town and try to limit your remarks to about three minutes, that would be appreciated. Thank you.
Sure. My name is Joy Malomo, and I'm in Lakeville.
I'm sorry, Joy what?
Malomo.
Okay.
And I am in Lakeville. So I guess two questions. What is the rate that we're at right now? So that we know where we're going and how far off this is? Do you guys have that number?
We don't. Well, I can just summarily answer it. At the middle school, we're never going to be at that rate, simply because of, at least currently. I shouldn't say never. At this point, there are students that don't qualify. We have an entire sixth grade that doesn't even have the ability to be vaccinated. What I can tell you is, to date, the vaccination rate for the juniors and seniors is 61%. We are still calculating freshmen and sophomores. So just to give you a little perspective, that's directly from the nurse leader at the high school. Our current vaccination rate for juniors and seniors, one is 60 and one is 62, so on average, 61%.
Does it go by school or district, like the whole, all of the schools together? So I understand the numbers that you just gave me.
So the local decision, which could potentially be made, can be done by school and/or district.
Okay.
So it could be a high school decision, could be a middle school decision, it could be a Free Town, Lakeville Regional School District decision.
Okay. The second question that I have is, are we still under emergency, a state of emergency in Massachusetts? Because I don't believe we are. It was ended in May, right? Or one of those dates, there was a couple of extensions, but I believe it ended in May, right? You would know, Jean, right?
Well, I'm in a state of emergency at Mass DOT. We're never going back. I don't know what's going on. I think you're right. I think it was lifted in May, and I think additional steps, not a state of emergency, but I think additional steps were initiated by the governor. And those include some of his vaccine mandates, which I'm sure you've heard about. But I don't believe, no, we're not operating under state emergency.
That's correct.
Okay, I didn't think so.
No.
And a lot of us didn't think so. So I actually got the box of the Binax tests.
Oh, okay.
And it says, "For use under emergency, use authorization only."
That's the Food and Drug Administration.
Yeah, that's a reference that has the ability to the FDA.
That's the federal, not the state.
That's not referencing the state of emergency by the governor.
Right, that's how the vaccines were issued to begin with.
Is there a federal emergency, state of, a federal emergency?
To my knowledge, that has to do with the vaccine issuing, because they were, I forget what it's called, what the terminology is, but it was, they didn't go through the whole process. They now are, or one of them is anyway, but they had, does anybody remember what that's called? Emergency, I can't remember, unfortunately.
Emergency authorization.
Emergency use authorization, I think that was it, yeah.
That's correct.
From the.
So that reference on that box references that product. That's how it was, that's how it was ultimately authorized.
E-U-N.
For use.
Right, but we're still using them. This is a box that was issued to Massachusetts two weeks ago that they used for people to test. And ours are Binax, so is our nurse here?
Go ahead.
I think you're missing the point. The point is that it's regulated by the FDA, that it's like putting on medicines or cigarettes, you have to have certain language. What that box is telling you, the language is telling you is, "I'm issuing this because it was under an emergency provision, not doing the normal FDA application." It's not telling you that you can only use this under an emergency state by the governor.
Yeah.
Okay, okay. So there's another question. What exactly are on these, like in these? Because we've heard that there's cancer-causing ingredients. And I was reading the paperwork, but I'm just an ordinary person, and it's hard for me to understand this stuff. Does our nurse understand it? And do you all, do any of you understand it? And can explain it to us, what's really on it? Because we're understanding that people are getting really bad brain bleeds, more surgeries, nose bleeds. Are you guys all getting tested, like once a week or whatever?
Uh, I've been tested a lot, but.
None of us are any more equipped to answer that question.
No, we're not.
I would suggest you touch base with your medical professional who can answer that. If you're concerned about the test, you have every option to not opt in for the test. And if that's what your concern is, I would strongly suggest you have a conversation with your medical professional before even doing that.
Sure, right, that is a personal decision. However, I want to make sure that our nurse knows what is going up our kids' noses for seven days in a row. And if it's going to be hurting them, I wouldn't think that any of you would continue saying that this is okay if it's going to hurt them. So we really need to address this. It needs to be looked at. There's chemicals going into the kids, into the people, even you guys probably, if you're testing, that are not okay for our bodies. But I can't read this and pull it out. So I need to consult with somebody that knows more than me.
Well, to Mr. Owen's point, I think that would have to be a clinical medical professional, and I don't feel equipped to answer that. I've had a lot of COVID tests. I understand that it's new, and we don't understand all the language, don't understand all the implications. But I would encourage you to have that conversation, and we can chat with the nurse, too. I'm sure, I don't know.
Our nurses have met with the school physician and the Board of Health, and clearly will continue to do so. But I will bring this back to their attention once again.
Thank you. And we had had a question at the last meeting, and I never saw the answer, and I apologize if I missed it in an email. We were going to talk with our lawyer, our town lawyer, to see if the commissioner really had the ability to approve all of this. Did you guys ever talk with the lawyer to find out?
Yes, our school attorney has clearly spelled out that the commissioner is well within his right to mandate masks in our schools.
And the whole thing that the committee gave him the ability to make this mandate, but really, it was supposed to be done by the legislature?
You asked me your question, I guess that's the answer I received.
That is the answer we have.
And this is the last meeting. If it's a legislator.
Yeah.
We could happily provide who the legislators are that you need to be following up with, right? That is our local representation. If you have concerns about the legal aspects of it, those are the individuals that you should be providing. There was a follow-up with our council to make sure that we are within the realm and we need to follow that, the answer is yes. If you have future concerns, you need to address them with our local representation all the way up to the governor. There've been several of us that have reached out to the governor locally through this whole pandemic. That's the avenue that you need to take.
Okay, I think that's it. Thanks for answering everything.
Well, thank you for your, yes, your input. Anybody else? Yes, there's one more. Again, we are trying to limit these to three minutes.
I know, that's okay, I'm sorry. Carrie Palia Logos, I have a high school student here. I just want to share my experience with the test and stay. It's really not transparent exactly what goes on. So I received a text from my daughter, and she was like, "Mom, what's going on? I've been taken out, I can't eat lunch with all my peers." So she was put into the auditorium, no one, I had no idea. And she was removed with two other kids, and someone watches over them while they eat lunch in silence. And in the protocol, in your guidelines, it doesn't say anywhere that the child will be removed. So after my email to you, Mr. Madiris, apparently, they go back into the cafeteria now. However, now they sit over on the part of the cafeteria where the round tables are. So yet they're still segregated from the other students. And I'm not understanding why, like we said, why are we not testing the vaccinated kids? Because they're just going about, and they can still spread, but nobody's testing them. We just watch. But then you have, it's not making sense to me, you know?
Yes.
And like, what is the future? I know the numbers change. We may have 10 who are in close contact, 20, 50. What is the game plan as time progresses, since we're so early in the school year? Like you said, 12 days or whatever we are. How are you going to, you know, kind of keep it, who's vaccinated, who's not, by sitting in the cafeteria at separate tables? Like, if you're going to separate kids, you should have everybody three feet apart, not just vaccinated or not vaccinated, okay? So you're separating the unvaccinated children, and that's not right. You're totally segregating them. And I want to know what you have in place, you know, where they can still transmit it, vaccinated kids? So why aren't everybody, like, do you need to go back to before when everybody had staggered lunches and things like that to separate everybody equally?
Mrs. Fox, I can speak.
Go ahead.
I don't know if there are additional questions, but I can respond to.
If you would.
If there, Carrie, are there any other items that?
And also, yes. So if you don't do the, every day that my daughter's tested, her nose burned, and it continued to burn every day while she was here getting tested. So next time, she won't be tested, obviously, because every day, her nose is raw from whatever is on the, you know, that we use, that the nurse, Ms. Muller or Ms. Mueller, I forget her name, tests, so it's raw. They're able to remotely do their stuff? Like, the teacher will teach them remotely, like while they're at home for test and stay? They have access to that? Is that correct?
So there is some, there is not a full remote option available to any students in the district or for the Commonwealth, for that matter.
There needs to be, because they have the right to a public education. And since I'm not going to test my daughter anymore because of the burning of her nose, if she's a close contact and seeing, you know, ninth grade, 10th, 11th, 12th, many years of testing coming through with the COVID. So, you know, she is entitled to her education, and the remote learning needs to be accessible to her, since I'm not going to be testing any of my children. If they're close contacts.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, go ahead.
So that's what I would like to know.
I can have a seat, I'll answer the questions.
Okay, great, thank you.
So first of all, within the context of the document that I shared, we're following at all five of our schools the protocol established by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education in relation to vaccinated and unvaccinated individuals, both students and staff. We are addressing spacing, which is clearly spelled out and transparent with the state in relation to three feet of spacing for unvaccinated. We are making, we are making, we are making efforts at each of the schools, because it's a somewhat individual where we can accommodate those requests. Carrie's absolutely correct. The initial piece was some auditorium stage space, it was then moved into the school. I would welcome any parent with a mask indoors to come visit the cafeteria if you feel your children are being segregated, to see that. Because I don't, I think, taken out of context, it's the characterization that these students are being isolated and separated just isn't accurate. I've been in the cafeteria 16 days. Well, I don't want to get into a back and forth.
No, I'm not going to, sir. I'm not going to, but let me tell you this. If I hadn't emailed and brought it to the attention that the kids are being removed, nowhere in the paperwork did you send to me in that. It says, "The child who is not vaccinated for COVID-19 will be moved over into the cafeteria, the library, down the hall." It doesn't say it, period. Okay, that's not transparent, because if I had known that, I wouldn't have signed and given my informed consent, and it was not informed consent.
All right. You know what I will say? This is, no, you're a parent and you care, this is all fine. Don't, of course you do. And what I'm experiencing, I think what we're all seeing, is that this is still a moving target. You know, the fact that, was it last week we changed when the date for the 80%, the unmask? We changed that. We are seeing breakthrough, positive results from people who are fully vaccinated. I think we're going to see protocols coming out of DESI continue to be modified. But what's really important is the feedback we get from the parents and the experience that you are seeing firsthand with your kids. And then also, you know, I'm happy that the principal's here today. We have people on the ground in there that are trying to manage this ably and competently and humanely. This is, this is a whole new world for all of us. So I don't think that this protocol necessarily will be in place next week. I do think that there's a lot of compassion in these buildings for these kids, and they want the best for all of them. And the first thing in our mission is the safety of our kids. And that's what we're fighting for here, all of us. We are. Pardon me, pardon me, you're out of order. You need to stand up and give me your name and your town, and please limit your comments to three minutes if possible.
John, Lakeville.
John, what?
From Lakeville.
I need your name, please.
Malomo, M-A-L-O-M-O.
Okay, thank you. Okay, yes. You had a comment or a question, sir?
Yes.
Yes.
You asked a question. You said, "Why can't it make?"
Yeah, like, last time I was here at the same building, I'm just curious. You had said masks was optional, and you said, "I don't listen to DESI or anybody else." You said that in this room, I remember you saying that.
Well, you know what?
The next time I came, and then I get a letter, and the thing that says they're going to wear them in October.
Right, so we, the mask, I think we've been over this a few times. DESI has said that we must have masks in the buildings.
Yeah, but I thought we didn't have to worry about what DESI says all the time.
Excuse me, we are following the rules and regulations that are coming down from the state, and we're implementing them to the best of our ability. We're hearing from parents, things we don't like either, and we're working on all of that. So the mask is now a mandate in the building, at least until we have 80%, which won't be the middle school, won't be the elementary schools, it would be the high school potentially, 80%.
That sounds like extortion.
Well, it could be, I don't know. That's what we're going by right now, so.
If you get vaccinated, you're going to wear a mask, that's ridiculous.
I don't want to go down a path, but I.
No, I'm restricted, that's 21 years.
Okay, thank you for your commentary, Mr. Malomo. Nobody else's public comment, I think we're going to move along with the agenda. Are we good? All right, thank you. Minutes, first thing is the acceptance of the 8:25, 21 minutes. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second? Second. I have a motion, is there any discussion on those minutes? Hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Anybody abstaining? Motion carried. And then we have executive section of the same date. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I have to abstain. Motion carried. Yes, I forgot this, I forgot, I went over and I said, "I'm so happy you're here."
Mrs. Fox, if I, if I may.
Yes, please do.
So first of all, I have to apologize to Boston, Katie, because it's the first meeting, and I said, "Here's how it works." Right at the very beginning of the meeting, we get you guys in, and then we let you go home with your homework and activities. And so, so much for that, the true transparency. So my apologies, folks, we let the public participation.
And mine as well. I thank you for being here, I apologize, so happy to have you.
Believe me, the school committee has been asking for some time, because we had, well, obviously, the really not normal year last year. I could tell you on behalf of the entire board that's here, we're thrilled that we have student representatives here. So Boston, Katie, thank you. We have Principal Deser here, we'll introduce them, because I do believe that they're part of our school council, and then meet forward. So Katie, so Caitlin, if you could just respond.
We just had our first, our first school council, which was great, so that's why I decided to come over and see how they did, we had been meeting about, you know, what to share with all of you. These two are wonderful representatives of our school, student athletes, honorable people. We have 10th grade Boston Paquette, not a shy bone in his body. I think Katie Wizniewski, who just came from her, I hate to take this under, a winning field hockey game.
Katie, in what year are you?
I'm a senior.
So we have a sophomore and a senior. You guys are up.
So I'm Katie, and the Laker leaders went into the freshman homerooms a few weeks ago, and we explained the process of running for student government and being a part of student council. And many people got involved in that, and the freshman elections were held, and the new officers will be announced in the superintendent's corner. Also, DECA had their first meeting this Tuesday, and many kids showed up, and that's all in person this year, as are many other clubs, which are great for the students. And UponaQuit has their first SAT this Saturday, and it will be at the school.
All right, I'm Boss Paquette, and like Katie said, there's lots of stuff happening with school council. The Spirit Week, pep rally, and homecoming committees just started. I know homecoming, their first committee meeting is this week, and then pep rally and Spirit Week is the beginning of next week. And we're trying to have those done for those events to happen in November. Also, the student council is hosting Ponicon, and it's kind of like a game night slash like Comic-Con type thing, where we're trying to get lots of popular games, like board games, and also lots of video games, and it will be in the library. So that's going to try to happen during late December. And also, just all the clubs have lots of turnouts, and all the sports, everyone's really excited that all sports are back and that everyone's like in person. So there's like a lot of good stuff happening right now.
Thank you so much for that update. Mrs. Baron? Katie, is this the first year that the SATs, or do you know, is this the first year that the SATs have been on campus?
Yes.
Well, thank you very much to our new principal for getting that on campus for us. I think this committee has asked for that a number of times, so, thank you.
I can't take responsibility for all of that, but I'm excited for it.
Well, you and your staff, please thank them.
I just want to second that thank you, too. I know, well, first of all, welcome, Boston and Katie, thank you so much. It's great to see, I'm sure, your smiling faces, but good news and good things happening as we move closer to normal. But on the SAT front, we've been, you know, advocating for that for many years, so I appreciate the movement on that. And to have Free Town and Lakeville kids have the opportunity to have seats in town for the SATs is important. So thank you for movement on that. And thank you as well to your leadership, you and your leadership team on that.
Yeah, it's a wonderful thing. So I'm glad that you're happy to be back, that's what we wanted as a committee. Glad that everything's moving ahead in the right direction. And with that, as I mentioned before the meeting started, you can bolt, which you're welcome to stay if you would.
Great job, Boston and Katie, thanks.
Yeah, thank you.
Welcome, we'll see you again. Thanks, Mrs. Deser, appreciate it.
Okay, so now we're at item five, S or three, and I believe that's.
So Carol Lee's follow-up, beat that presentation. Come on, you're usually well-prepared, so can you?
I'll do my best. And so, good evening to the community members of Free Town and Lakeville. The school. And so, good evening to the community members of Freetown and Lakeville, the school committee members, the teachers, staff, and administrators of the district. Tonight, we are pleased to present the prospective use of a one-time grant opportunity of over $2.2 million, a historic opportunity for our school district as a result of the ongoing pandemic. The American Rescue Plan Act of 2021, Public Law 117-2, created the possibility of $2,218,998 to be allocated and available to our district. The fund's purpose is to provide additional funding as a response to COVID-19 measures through a grant called Esser 3, the Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Funds. The grant period is from March 13th, 2020, through September 30th, 2024. Included in this PowerPoint on the second bullet is a reference to a website that provides a comprehensive list of allowable items. Like all federal grants, the district is held to conforming within the parameters of the allowable items stated in the grant. Some examples of the allowable items are to provide for materials or support, to address lost instructional time, but would need to be measurable through evidence-based interventions or methodologies. We can use this grant for high-quality instructional materials, professional development, summer or extended learning. In fact, we must use 20% of the grant for these purposes. We can include costs for personal protective equipment and supplies, educational technology, similar to how the district utilized COVID CARES funds to purchase Chromebooks for our student body. We can also use the grant for costs to the school facilities for repairs and improvements, to address air quality, and any other environmental hazards. There is another category as well, entitled "Other expenditures necessary to continue operations during the pandemic." This is a category that provides some additional flexibility to the district, so long as the transactions can be tied back to the needs related to COVID-19 in the pandemic. During the process of preparing for our grant application, we have consulted with our stakeholders to request feedback for how they perceive the district should be spending the $2.2 million. We reached out to stakeholders through our One Call system, which included parents, caregivers, students, teachers, school committee members, other employees, and administrators. And we are now providing at this end of the presentation tonight, an opportunity for the community members to also voice their opinion. The survey results indicated that the highest interest in spending is to provide academic support to make up for any lost skills or progress, followed by funding to support social and emotional learning and mental health support. As you can see from this chart, summer learning seemed to be the lowest on the priority list based on the survey participants. We have included a summary of proposed uses by category. The evidence-based instructional learning includes a continuation of funding of six interventionists that would work directly with our students, two at Freetown Elementary, two at Assawamsted, and two at our intermediate school for fiscal years 2023 and 2024. The 2022 piece is covered by Esser 2. This category also includes the continuation of Highlander, our professional development contractor, through a fifth year, where our staff have been provided the tools necessary to adapt in an ever-changing technological environment. For summer learning, this addresses the costs from the summer of 2022 through 2024 to support wages and operations for summer school. We believe these estimates are sufficient to support a growth in enrollment for the programs if found necessary. One of the larger categories include educational technology, which includes an estimate for Chromebook replacements set to expire before the start of the 2024 to 2025 school year. We are projecting approximately 500 devices, or 20% of our one-to-one initial Chromebook investment would need replacement. The educational technology category also includes new technologies for the district, devices called Promethean boards, which provides an interactive learning environment for our students, makes class learning fun and engaging. It is a plug-and-play technology that our curriculum director and our IT department have explored and believe it would be an excellent addition for our district. The district would be looking at approximately 47 devices, 15 from the high school, 15 for the middle school, 11 for our intermediate school, and three for each elementary school. We believe this technology, which is cutting-edge, will be more consistent with what newer schools currently being built are offering, which would continue to make Freetown-Lakeville School District more competitive when compared to other districts. And the other larger category presented here includes proposed facility upgrades, which would cover campus-wide HVAC-related items. We are expecting with the upcoming completion of our train capital project, that we will have a punch list of suggested replacements of failed components. We are also setting aside in this category funds for exhaust fans that we would need to address, which we believe would be the cafeteria locations of our schools. Also, some window repairs at the intermediate school, and recommended wastewater treatment plant upgrades. For our wastewater treatment plant, we are looking at addressing our lift stations, which would prevent future environmental issues and possible failures of the system. It is important to note that the uses of this grant can be amended at any point to support the needs of the district. And I would now like to open up the floor for any comments from the school committee or the public. Thank you for your opportunity, for this opportunity to present this information tonight.
Thank you very much. Please, can I ask a real quick question?
You turn the key.
Vehicles aren't in here.
There are no vehicles in here currently.
Thanks. Go ahead, Miss Brown.
What was the participation level of this survey?
Sure, I do have that information. We received 289 responses from our One Call system, 41 students, 179 parent caregivers. We had about 5% from the general public, other citizens, 85 teachers, school personnel other than teachers, 26, and then we had a few other miscellaneous individuals.
So 40 students out of 2,800?
Correct.
185 parents out of how many? Thousands.
Yeah, we have 2,800 kids.
Thousands, thousands.
Yep.
Great. Once we submit our application, can the fund be reallocated to different groups?
That's correct. Absolutely.
Just a couple of concerns that I would have, that I'd hopefully keep in mind.
Sure.
Every time we add new technology, we sometimes, well, I don't know if I'm showing the right words here, I'd like to make sure we take in consideration the infrastructure to support these new technologies. Right? So it's an investment, but we just need to make sure we carry that investment forward in that case. The other big piece is the, the social-emotional learning is a big concern that I have at all grades, but also at the, in particular, at our primary grades. We do have some of those grades, and this is our, their first sense of normalcy is really not what we generally have, right? I'm happy that they're all back. So at some point, I'd like to hear, whether through the curriculum director or the elementary school principals, to me, at this point, those numbers of two, two, and two each in schools are low. But you guys are the experts, I'd hear from that. I just want to make sure that we're bringing these kids up to speed, we're bringing them that they can go on to the next grade level, we're bringing them to they can go on to the next school. And I know that's been a big concern, especially even parents and teachers alike. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Oh, sorry, then my last one is risks to funding. So we went to Esser 2, and we had to change it a little bit because the government changed how they handle it, right? So this is a big number. What's the risk to funding this?
Oh, I don't think there's any significant risk for a change in funding for this. It was allocated. They did come out with version one, version two, and this was the final allocation.
And the reporting is pretty extensive, huh?
The reporting is quarterly.
Yeah. So a lot of, okay, Mrs. Sully?
Thank you for this. Under the evidence-based instructional learning, the positions you mentioned, it was a total of four or six?
There are six positions, they're part-time positions, two at each of the elementary, actually, two at all three of the elementary schools, counting the intermediate as elementary level.
And what is the specific, is it just like a math support, reading support? Is it...
Math and DLA.
Okay.
Based on data.
And the overlap with the Esser 2 monies, that pushes that, those positions out until 2024?
2024, correct.
And then it could be a recommendation potentially for the budget long-term, but once the grant expires, it's...
Right, it's one-time funding.
Okay.
We have to be clear on that, and we all know that can be a dark hole to go down, so...
But at least the good news in this instance, it's multi-year.
Right, it's not one year.
Well, one benefit from the overlap.
Funding, as opposed to some years where we've had one-year situations.
So the six for each year is about a $75,000 impact. So if we were to phase two at a time for the next three budget years out of the grant, we could essentially phase it in if we decided we wanted to go that route. Exactly. It would be a $25,000 impact each year to phase it in over a three-year period.
Thank you.
Okay, Miss Brown.
Related to that, I would have a concern if we're using Esser 3 funds to offset expiring Chromebooks, because we're just kicking the can down the road here, right? So this is one-time funds. When we got this, we knew this was a big concern. We have to figure out how we deal with expiring Chromebooks. We're going to have that now with 2,800 in the district. My concern with using these funds is we're just kicking that can down the road, but hopefully we can come up with a long-term strategy for that.
Not unlike we would for textbooks, for example. You just have to have a plan so you can replenish as the need arises. Did you have a comment or question, Mrs. Barron?
Back to the six part-time people that we have hired, the two at each of the elementary schools. Have they been, have they been assigned to particular grade levels? The two for the whole school, K to three, or would it be two for the third grade or two for the second grade?
The principals and the teachers have decided how they're using them based on the data that they're looking at. So iReady data is already coming in, and those teachers will work with small groups. They could work K1, 2, 3 if they wanted. It's up to them how many they want in that group and how they want to use them.
But it's data-driven in relation to performance.
It's all data-driven, absolutely.
So they're not being used by kindergartners, probably? Maybe? Okay.
Could be towards the end of the year.
No, I mean right now.
Right now, they're just starting, and they start Monday.
Oh, they start this Monday?
Yeah.
Okay, then we can save some of those questions. My second question is the technology enhancement. Sounds like a smart board on steroids. Could you spell what that board was called?
Sure, Promethean, P-R-O-M-E-T-H-E-A-N.
Yes, Promethean boards. Thank you very much.
And if I just may add, just because they didn't on their own time, both director, both the director of finance and director of instruction went to visit the New Durfee High School just to take a look at a new facility. Considering we're not looking potentially at a new facility, the effort is being made to incorporate newer facility-type technologies into existing, and that's why both of these went, visited the school there as an example. There's multiple examples in southeastern Mass, right? Attleboro, there's other examples. But it's a, it's an exciting piece that is absolutely involving the technology department that's had some experience, and so it's exciting, and I just want to make that note. It's very early on in the process, but it's an ability to, to take, I think Mr. Owen made reference to infrastructure, right? To be sure that what we're doing matches with our existing facilities' needs moving forward, and I think this is a true example of that, which is exciting. Thank you.
I find the name, that's the Greek god of fire.
Google it.
He's the Greek god of fire. I don't know.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah. Any other questions from the committee? Questions from the community? If we could keep these brief, please, thank you.
We do the best that we can in the time that we have allowed, and we understand we all want to go home. I guess it's a couple of questions. Can you just explain a little bit about the two new people that are coming into each schools, and what that will oversee, like kind of in layman's terms for me to...
The interventionists?
The interventionists are retired teachers from this district who are now coming in based on the data that the teachers are using to provide some instructional support to students that need it. So it's a pretty fluid process, based on progress monitoring that they do every couple of weeks, which group of students in which classroom needs some support, that interventionist will go in. The best part is that these are, most of them are teachers who were in those particular buildings, so they already know the kids. They know the, you know, they know the materials we're using, they know how to use iReady, so they can hit the ground running once they start.
Okay, all right, thanks for explaining that. The other question is, can we get a copy of this presentation? Is it for community use?
Absolutely.
I don't know if Mr. Madares will send it or not, but yeah, that would be great.
Can we?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Guess I just got to kind of ask too. What if we didn't take that money? Can we take these masks off?
There's no connection.
But it says that you have to have a connection to the pandemic and issues.
Well, it does, it's pandemic-related funds. All the Esser funding has been, it's to, it's to help largely with some of the slides that we've experienced. Yeah.
Oh, thank you. I appreciate that. Okay.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, we should put it on the website.
We can make the presentation available on the website, too.
He was nice enough to give her the hard copy.
We'll make it, we'll make that available on the website.
I forgot my question. Oh, for the, the protective, PPE?
PPE, yeah.
I know some other schools, they take the Plexiglas, but they put them all at the desks. Like, is that something in the future, maybe they'd have here? You know how each desk has the Plexiglas around it in, you know, different school districts? So that, you know, someday, you know, COVID's never going to go away, whether you're vaccinated or not. So then if, you know, the mask thing, they could do the...
Yeah, no, I mean, you're absolutely right. A lot of places, also places that were space-constrained, had to do that, and certainly they go to the grocery store, the Plexiglas is up.
Take on the masks eventually, I don't know.
They did not eliminate masks, no. I don't know that eventually.
Those types of purchases, though, over time, can be considered and would fall into that category.
Would be part of that some funding, right.
But to your point, most of those districts that have chosen to do that are doing it because there's some space restrictions, but...
We did.
But, but I wouldn't dismiss that as a potential option down the line.
Something to consider, so at this point, I kind of need to close public comment, unless there's anything else on this presentation that you had a question on?
Can I, like, I come up and, like, in the future, like, grab a couple of boxes of masks? I'm kind of tired of buying them all.
Oh, I know. I just ordered some, I'm way older. I don't know what we have for inventory. I know we have enough, but if a kid comes with that one...
So we haven't provided it for personal use, we, the focus has been for the radiations for school use.
Yeah.
So certainly we would make them available for students and staff.
And that's what you meant, right? Yeah.
Oh, yeah, we have them readily available in the schools, yes.
Yep. All right, thank you, and thank you for your commentary and questions. Okay, now we're getting to the fun stuff, old business. FY21 budget.
Included in your packet is the general fund overview for FY21 year-to-date, showing the estimated fund balance, excess and deficiency balance rather of $2,041,598. We have prepared the necessary worksheets to begin the E and D certification process and have started providing information to our auditors who assist in the process. And in relation to our COVID expenditures, just an update, I've included this as item 8A, but it relates to 2021. We received deposits in September 2021 of $469,348, which was part of the original $1,028,000 that we billed to Lakeville through Plymouth County for the CARES Act. That leaves us with a remaining outstanding receivable of $230,000. And that summarizes FY21.
Thank you. You want to just roll right into FY22?
Sure. For FY22, the year-to-date budget report is presented, as well as the assessment sheet, comparing the revenue and expenditures to the same time period last year. The activities seem to be relative... The activities seem to be relatively consistent. The budget presented in this report for both revenue and expenditures includes the fact that the district has adjusted or unwound the S R two provision, which was voted on at the last school committee meeting. As a result of unwinding these costs, I had noted in the last meeting, there was a $33,000 equity difference between the towns because the S R two calculation originally required in the governor's draft budget was different than the calculation that we would require to apportion our costs based on enrollment for the towns. I have emailed both town accountants as a response, and the town administrators for both towns are made aware. I believe they are planning, the town administrators are planning on having a discussion on how they want the differences resolved or how they perceive to have those differences resolved. The following options were presented. The first option to credit the differences in S R two grant funding, since we had applied to cover projects that relate to both towns for their town-owned buildings, F E S and A E S. And the second, to credit the differences through future assessments through the F Y twenty-three budget process. I have not heard the conclusion, but I will follow up with the town administrators. I did provide the backup to them, to the calculations and the options. And that would conclude my updates for F Y twenty-two.
What was your recommendation? Which option would you prefer?
So originally, I had recommended dealing with it through the S R two grants.
Yeah.
Because we are crediting both Asawam City and Free Town Elementary some funding, sort of a gift back from the district to the towns for their buildings. And so I thought we could make the adjustment through there. But, you know, I'm just waiting to hear back from the towns to see if they agree.
I will say, after been through a number of credit debit conversations with the town, it's refreshing to hear that there's a collaborative approach and there's a communication between both of them, whichever way it goes in that case, so, but thank you for that.
Sure. Any other committee questions on F Y twenty-one or twenty-two?
To the E and D number, I'm excited that it's finally, I'll say, healthy. Almost to a point that if I do my quick math, it's a hair over five percent.
It's a hair under. I think it was $2,054.
Okay, so, all right, so, again, that would just be my, my common core math type thing, so.
I can check. Yes, it's very close to the threshold.
Got it, thank you.
No offense, Mr. Owen, I'm going to tuggle with her number.
No objection to that part, so.
Well, we're, we're at that five percent.
But that was, that was certainly part of our, our calculation.
Yeah, nope.
You're correct.
I certainly was.
Phew, that's why I had no sit over there.
That's right, she does it, yeah, okay. So we now have six C policy sections, J V and J K A A. This is the second green one.
So there are no discussions, items that came to my attention, so I'd make a recommendation that the committee take action on both these out of policies.
Tell them to. Thank you. I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
And a second. Is there any discussion on these two policy pieces? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any extensions, motion carries? New business is the DESI guideline staffing class size update.
Yeah, so we've had, and some of it's been referenced a little bit through the public participation account. We've had an exciting start to the school year. It's great to hear both Boston and Gary, because you could see the excitement, enthusiasm. If you drove into the parking lot this afternoon with the lights still on, you saw a ton of activities happening, and I think there's certainly a sense of normalcy. We're so thrilled to have our kids, we're only in day sixteen, keep in mind, right? Day sixteen of our school year, and I think we've had a fantastic start. I had a leadership meeting today as we discussed transportation, to address some transportation issues in the first month, which are pretty common practice. But, so I'll touch upon that a little bit, as you don't have your bus numbers yet. I have them, I'm just waiting some tweaks because we may be making some adjustments to that, but.
Well, I managed to mess up one of the routes for you, so sorry.
But we're working on that, yeah, for the, for the rest piece. But that was addressed, too, though, but, right, we had some direction from the state with Jean's referencing, in reference to using certain, certain street and staying clear of that street. It was strictly a safety issue.
It was.
And then it was cleared up, so we were then able to free back the buses to use that route, which was taken care of. And again, I keep, I keep referencing, and you'll see in my super tense corner again, that whole patience, respect, and tolerance piece that we're only in, you know, the second, third week of our school year here, so we have a lot to be excited about. I mean, keep in mind that every decision we're making here is always about safety for our students and staff, but it's also about keeping kids in person instruction, right? I mean, the delivery is, we saw how remote learning can be successful, and I think we really knocked it out of the parking relation to doing the best we could. But we really believe and strongly feel that our best option is to keep our kids here in our five schools, and we feel we've done a great job, and I, I credit the principals, the five principals, their staffs, the community for the support. I'll reference the DESI guidelines first, because obviously, in my super tense corner this week, I'm going to highlight that on September twenty-second, twenty-seventh. The commissioner extended the mask requirement through November first for all schools in the Commonwealth. In addition, he recognized that as of October fifteenth, schools that demonstrate the vaccination rate of eighty percent or more of all students and staff may consider, may consider, and I think that's why I made that reference earlier, whether they want to take that local discretion. We're not there yet, that's still a couple of weeks out. We're calculating some numbers, and we'll bring it back to this board with some advice and guidance from the Board of Health as well, because that's who they suggest that the school committee references. But, so staffing-wise, we are in very good shape in relation to kind of where we're at. We're making a couple of tweaks on some hires. I provided you class size numbers. Our class numbers are, we're up almost seventy-five students, right, from the previous year, which we expected. And yet, our class size and numbers and sections reflect the fact that we're trying to maintain class size specifically at the primary grades in the elementary school. So I've provided you those September numbers. They'll soon be October one official numbers. And I'd be happy to answer any questions in relation to that. You also see the new school choice numbers there. In addition, I continue to provide the communities, but also the school committee, with updates on relation to our positive cases. To date, we have had twenty-five positive cases. Again, let's keep the context of that, twenty-five positive cases that have come through the community with over 2,800 students, over 450 employees, consistent with what we're seeing in the Commonwealth. We're attempting to not only use our, our symptomatic approach in testing that we had in place last year, but our test and stay, which was referenced. Positivity rate continues to show thirty-four, fifty-three cases within the town. That's not the school. There's really no rhyme or reason in relation. You basically have one or two cases per grade level. I think, again, the motivation and focus within the protocols of what the state has established through DESI and the Board of Health is to make sure that parents and families have the ability and opportunity, if they choose, to keep their kids in school if they've been identified as a close contact within, within a positive case. And I think we've had a ridiculous amount of success in relation to allowing students through what has just started the process. Keep in mind, there are districts that didn't have the test kits that started the school year. We had all of our test kits prior. We're trying to continue to support and streamline things such as the cafeteria that was referenced and finding locations that respectfully allow students to be maintained in a school setting. Again, we're honoring requests from parents that choose not to have their child tested and are supplying them instructional methods by which they can not have gaps, even though they're not in school during that time. That's, it's a big win for this district and for the Commonwealth that didn't exist for us last year. We did not have the ability to try to say to families that children were not sick. We simply identified them and sent them home. We no longer need to do that based on the mechanism that we have in place. I can't speak for the commissioner, for the state. What I can tell you is that we follow the mandates. I referenced this to a couple of board members. My wife went to jury duty on Friday in Fall River. To do her civic duty, she was required to wear a mask in the building and was told, along with all the other jurors, that if she's not able to do that, she must leave the building and not honor her civic duty and make up for it. Likewise, this school district is making decisions in the best interest of all individuals, and it has nothing to do with politics. It has to do with what we believe and the Board of Health believe and the state believes allows us to keep our kids and students and staff safely in school. So we're looking at transportation, for example, the start of school, which is pretty common. We're looking to increase one bus, bring one bus back potentially within our budget to offset some issues that we're seeing, both in Free Town and Lakeville in relation to bus stops and also into the timeframe. In meeting with all the principals and both transportation directors today, Mr. Resendiz and his assistant, it was clear, it appears, the morning routine seems to be running very smoothly. In the afternoon, we do have some elementary runs that need to be addressed. In addition to, and Jean referenced, there have been a couple of community stops that we need to take a look at in relation to high school stops and maybe locations. But that's pretty common practice. I've been doing this for eighteen years, the superintendent to school districts, that a transportation director would look at in the first two or three weeks of the school year and adjust a bus stop and say, well, you know what, we didn't take that into account. Or there's a construction site in one of the developments, and we didn't take that into account, so we need to adjust that and maybe do that. I will say this, the parents that have emailed me, and I would continue to encourage them to do so, and text me, I'm immediately forwarding that information. They've been respectful and understanding. They're doing what they think is best for their kids' safety. And we feel, from a capacity perspective, by the way, so keep in mind, all our buses transport safely, two to a seat, forty-seven students. There are twenty-four seats. One seat is single in the front of our buses. The guidelines call for anywhere between sixty-one, seventy-one, seventy-seven students on those buses, three to a seat. That's not the case here at Free Town, Lakeville. I can tell you at the three elementary schools and the middle school, high school run, because I have the numbers in front of me, that we are making accommodations and are maintaining two to a seat, and in most instances, less than that. In the couple of instances that we are seeing a few more students, depending on if they don't have a sporting event that day, primarily in middle school, high school, we're trying to address that. We're looking at some areas like Commercial Drive and a couple of the neighborhoods where it's an expanding population, and we may have to kind of do some adjustments to bus routes. So that's a work in progress, literally meeting today. It was important that all of my leadership team, meaning my principals, were part of that with Transportation. Kara joined us as well as the Director of Finance, because we do have some available funds. As you remember, you approved a transportation fund specifically for regular transportation availability. We're not sure we're going to have to use that, but we feel very comfortable prorating the number that we can bring one bus back to address. Again, we're trying to keep kids safely on the bus, but not have them be on the bus too long, but also adjust bus stops appropriately within neighborhoods to get kids to and from school in an efficient manner, but in a safe manner. And that was really the conversation. That's really, so when I touch upon class size, when I touch upon staffing, when I talk about the opening of school, I think we have a lot to be real thankful and proud about. And at the end of the day, we're going to see some things happen over the course of the school year where we have to make some adjustments. I do feel our current programs are allowing us to keep as many of our students in school safely. If you have specific questions, and I say this to the parents, the community at large, with the cameras rolling, since we don't have a large attendance here, if you have specific questions regarding your child at a specific level, email, text, call the principal, C C me, and we'll follow up. And we've had a ton of success with that. I typically don't leave my office or at least go home without a response there, and I think we've met the needs of almost all those individuals. So as I, I'd be happy to open it up to the committee for questions. I didn't read the statistics for you, but I, I will tell you, just for example, we've tested over, close to 400 students in relation to the test and stay program within additional supports, which tells me a lot of parents want to see their kids remain in school and want to do it safely, and we're honoring those other parents as well that choose, that are choosing not to. It's a small percentage when you look at the total number of kids that are impacted by it, considering we have 2,800 students. But I think I really give the health professionals and my staff a ton of credit in relation to pulling this off from day one. A lot of districts are just trying to kickstart this now. We've had it in place since the first day of school.
Yeah, we've been, I think, where we're thinking on that. Mr. Owen?
A couple of points here. I'll start with the transportation, just for the community's aspect. As a regional director, regional district, we need to plan a bus stop for all 2,800 students, okay? Which is very different from a school district that is not a regional district. They have other options in that particular case. And just seeing the student drop-off that happens at each of the schools is a number of students that do not take it, which is a kind of a disadvantage that we have in the district. I would welcome if the committee would sort of take this up with our, our local legislation and changing that policy to give us a little bit more flexibility. If a parent wants to opt out on transportation, it will make the bus routes more efficient based upon the number of parents that do drop off in that case. So that, that's item number one. As far as the class size, I have to tell you, I'm really concerned about the, well, I'm happy to see the, the class total of students that are involved in it, but I'm concerned about the class sizes, not just for this year, but as we continue on. Historically, we have seen, especially when students go from the elementary schools to grays, there's an increase of number, and if I do my quick math, again, it's bound to be off based upon the Director of Finance, but, you know, you're looking at two thirties as far as some of these numbers, and we've seen historically that only goes up when they go to the grays. So we, we have this where a number of students are going to continue to do that, which I think is a great thing with the students coming, but I also think this is kind of a, that we still have a number of students yet to come back as a result of the pandemic. I don't think we've gotten back to our numbers that opted for not to do school choice and not to do tech. They're doing homework. So I expect those numbers to go up as far as a forecast. So I'd be curious, not necessarily solving tonight, but how are we going to alleviate that? Because that's going to be a concern for years to come, especially in these grades that have been in that primary grade level, that have been through what we've been through the last couple of years.
Yeah, I think, I think you're correct. I think we are going to see, I think, certainly some of the buildup and some of the community incidents, I think we saw about seventy-five percent of our kids come back. So there, so, Stone, I think you're correct. We didn't see all of our students a hundred percent, which isn't surprising in relation to what is considered normal to start the year. I think we're going to have to monitor it. I think, I think both communities will see a multi-year phased-in piece. I think at the intermediate school, middle school, and high school, we have what some school committees in some districts would say are luxury, because spacing is a little bit more available to us. But those primary schools, Asawam City and Free Town Elementary School, that is absolutely, needs to remain on this school committee's radar over the future years because of spacing and class size. And I think that number is only going to continue to tick up and grow for all the reasons that you referenced. You'll continue to get these numbers. You'll continue to get some bus numbers each month as I have provided for you in the past.
My last thing, I, I can appreciate that we are following the guidance and pushing to some of the guidance, what we can do with the ultimate goal of keeping our kids safe. I do have a concern about how we treat vaccinated versus unvaccinated. There are some valid points by the public, by the community, and it's, if, I hope we take the measures that we're not segregating students, we're not providing a different piece. I said it to the last meeting, I have a concern where we stipulate, because you're vaccinated, you can go unmasked. So, and I know that's not going to be determined at this level, but I, I hope that we can at least push back a little bit so that we're not upping another opportunity of that.
First, if I may, just, we're following the protocols, but let's speak to them to make sure this isn't taken out of context. The references that are primarily made are just at lunchtime, where individuals are eating, right? Throughout the course of the day, all of our students, regardless of their vaccination status, are wearing masks, with the exception of seven mask exemptions, half of which are wearing masks, I may add, out of 2,800 students, even though they're exempt, they're choosing, the children are choosing to wear masks, but are permitted, out of our 2,800 kids, there's no distinction made between the groups. It is at lunchtime when masks are taken off, and you need to provide appropriate spacing that we're attempting to be as creative and sensitive as possible in relation to meeting those requirements. I do, to Mrs., I think Mrs. Fox referenced earlier, believe that there'll be some adjustments made to some of the protocols moving forward as well. Certainly more evidence develops and comes out in relation to vaccinated versus unvaccinated. So I, but we're absolutely sensitive to that at all of the schools and aware. And, and I would certainly welcome any, any emails, texts, or phone calls, as I said earlier, specific to a school and/or classroom or grade if there are some issues. But I just think it's important to note, I'm not suggesting I marginalize lunchtime, but I want to separate that set, because there's a little different criteria involved in relation. And I did provide you what the guidelines that the state has spelled out.
And I'm not questioning the district's implementation of it. I think we've done a great job in that aspect of it. I just want to continue to keep an eye on what is coming out from the state, right? As we look at, I know we're not even anywhere. As we look at, I know we're not even anywhere near the eighty percent, but the way the current protocol states is, if we're eighty percent, we still allow a school to go masked. But if you're unmasked, you still have to wear a mask, right? So, so I, I just want to be cognizant of that, especially as we roll out the new protocols that are coming out. We have to be cognizant of the fact of if we're going to start segregating students based upon that.
So I think, I think it might have been, this is O'Brien, I apologize. I wanted to make that reference because that deadline comes before the next school committee meeting. So I wanted to really give some assurance to the community that if in fact we met that threshold, that would not be a unilateral decision made by the superintendent to identify certain group in comparison. That would be something, if those numbers existed, that threshold existed, that would come before this board with input from the local Board of Health and then a determination be made. So I was really kind of sharing that if their parents were concerned that all of a sudden this kicks in. First of all, I don't think we'll be at that threshold, although that threshold could be adjusted because what, if the state chooses to do so, although, although that was not what was spelled out by the commissioner. I just wanted to make some assurances that we're not going to make some dramatic changes in treatment of our kids based on, based on that threshold number. It would come back, our next school committee meeting is October twentieth. If we had readily had that information available, I'd bring it to this board, having already consulted with the local Board of Health as to what their advice is.
Yeah, and, and please continue, from the public side of things, to provide feedback on anything.
Yeah, I mean, we're responding pretty quickly to what's happening and we'll continue to do so, so I appreciate that.
Because Mr. Owen makes a very good point that we need to be sensitive.
But start, again, as we've always said, start with the schools, start with the classroom teacher and your principal. And then if you feel that that school is doing something out of character or not consistent with district protocol, including me, helps because then I can make those comparisons to be sure that it's in line with what we're doing across the board for, for all of our kids. Thank you, Mrs. Fox.
Thank you. Just a quick question? Yeah, sure.
So in regard to protocols, for each school, will there be something more official that comes up that says, hey, in the middle school, we're going to need to kind of separate them and put them at a certain table?
So if I, so my reluctance to, to give you a specific answer on that is not a lack of transparency. Anybody who knows me well knows I've been here eight years. I will give you an answer. You may not like my answer, but I'll give you an answer and I'll hopefully do it in a respectful, professional manner. The, the concern I have about saying, this is how the high school, this is how Assawamsted is going to do that, is it may depend on the number of close contacts and the number of children impacted. If we can maintain the current numbers, I think we can look at a safe approach that blends those kids in and allows for spacing. But I, I, I hesitate to say that at this school we can do it because this week we had twenty students impacted or fifteen, and next week it's seventy. And I have parents saying, but you said this is how they're going to be seated in there. So that's the, the spacing is, is not going to change right now, at least unless the guidelines change in the state. So we need to make accommodations for the spacing specifically there. We're trying to do it within the context, and we've been able to do so in the context of the location that the kids are most common with. Trying to use even the outside, kids let use picnic tables if it's possible to have, have them have lunch. The last thing, and I say this passionately, thirty-five years of education experience, the last thing is we want to be sure that we're sensitive to how kids are being perceived and how they feel and on top of the safety. And I know that maybe not, how it comes across when your child texts you and say, this is what happened today. But we're going to learn too. So Carrie, to, to, if I may, I apologize, I don't have your last... She makes a valid point. She brought that to my attention. I asked, I went out, reached out to the high school administration because I wasn't aware. We had seventeen kids, just, so the facts, seventeen students that were close contacts. They did not have the spacing in the cafeteria for a lunch period. They're using the extension of the auditorium. So that spacing was set up. We, we, we're not using the auditorium anymore and we adjusted that. We actually had new cafeteria tables come in, by the way, if you didn't know that. Three of our schools, twenty-year-old cafeteria tables. I had staff members saying, it's finally twenty-one years later, new cafeteria, some of which are round. So we made some of those adjustments. And I say we, I give the high school administration credit. They were very sensitive to the request. And I specifically went out there to take a look. As you know, my office is here. So I just would ask for your patience in relation to those pieces. Don't ignore them or simply accept them. Do what you're doing, bring it to our attention, and if we can make some adjustments and corrections. It's not a lack of a coherent plan, because we do have a plan, but the specificity that you're asking for is somewhat challenging until we get a real handle on the numbers. As we see weeks go on though, we see that the numbers, and I, and I think that will be the case. I true, you know, again, I'm not forecasting what it's going to look like, but if you look at where we are, really kind of four weeks in, I say sixteen days, but we started out a couple of days in, we appear to be hitting, if you look at the dashboard, I actually, so a lot of districts have removed their close contacts because it's pretty misleading. If you notice, a lot of districts are just showing in state is only asking us to report COVID positive cases now. Because close contacts in the old days meant that those kids were removed from school. That's not the case. So when you see fifteen students at the high school, for example, and you had three positive cases, the assumption last year was, well, there's fifteen more students that need to be educated at home. Not necessarily based on the, the test and stay, but in, in respect of individuals who chose not to, we didn't want to break it down further and then I start identifying students who participate in the test and stay and students who did not. So we've kept it there in really in a sense of transparency to kind of let you know where it's at. We feel pretty good. I can tell you of the twenty-five cases, I want to say twenty-three of the cases that I'm sure, and I think it may be all twenty-five, did not emanate from the school, right? These were individuals who through the community, tested positive, some vaccinated, some unvaccinated. I mean, I don't have the facts relation to that, but obviously attended school and as a result impacted learning, potentially for kids and staff. But I, I think we're right on top of that. I would encourage you, email me, text me, call me, and we'll continue to maintain that.
Thank you.
Can I just have one other real quick? So if they choose not to do the test and stay, there is no remote option? Is that the case?
No, what I, I, maybe I, again, sometimes I think when you, be a little careful, not you per se, but in general when you make a statement. So I said that the state is not allowing a full remote platform. We are absolutely making accommodations for students and it varies slightly from secondary level synchronized learning into using the Chromebooks. We're taking full advantage of our technology. I cannot say strongly enough though, it is somewhat challenging to replicate a student being in school, but we are absolutely trying to provide some sort of education and learning for those students so there are not gaps that choose to safely stay home, not be tested, and return to us. We're doing that.
All right, Mrs. Barron.
So do I understand, thank you folks for bringing this up. So I don't want to use the word segregated, I'm going to say divided. So we divide those kids that are in the seven-day test and stay during cafeteria for right now. Do we divide them in any other way?
First, let me correct you there, but you did repeat it. So we're simply saying that if you sit with those children, you have to provide three feet of spacing. We're not restricting other children from sitting with them. They need to be within a spacing because of their pro, close contact to a positive case. That was part of the encouragement.
Initially you were.
So initially, because they were in another location at one school, only at the high school, every other place. But so, so I, I think that was really the conversation we had, which is, so now I have my best friend who wants to sit with me. The only restriction, and I underline only because I get some people cred, to, to stick with the protocol, is that we need to maintain the spacing while they're in that testing phase. It doesn't prohibit them from joining them for lunch. And actually, we have some now round tables in the cafeteria that allow for that spacing to be done a little bit easier. Yeah, so it's not a segregated area. It started out like that just because of, we were using the auditorium. Kids didn't tend to kind of go there. Again, I, I feel like I'm primarily focused on the high, at the other cafeterias and schools, they just, they were in there. We just had to make sure we have, it's the spacing issue. And it is, I'll just talk, just talk elementary schools for a minute. It's a little easier to address spacing at Freetown Elementary School than it is at Assawamsted Elementary School, just because of the sheer size of the cafeteria in those two schools. So what Mike Ward can maybe do, Bethany can't do, and so we're trying to figure out what makes the most sense. The numbers right now don't dictate that we need to, that we can do this, but it does not prohibit children from having a social opportunity. We're just simply saying, here's the protocol that we need to follow for those close contacts during this timeframe until we determine that we can safely not have that be the case. Again, I'm not passing judgment, don't want to have an argument with you about three feet, six feet, ten feet. That's not, I'm simply saying this is what the state guidelines are for the schools right now.
So is that the only place during lunch? So they participate in all the activities, after-school activities and so forth?
Well, they were, they were, they were in masks everywhere else. And, and so we, we don't need to make, put those restrictions in place anywhere else. They're taking the masks for obvious reasons to eat. If there's a mask break outside, they're outside, so then that restriction doesn't apply.
Okay, thank you very much.
They only get one mask break in high school outside now. Why is that?
So I, so I can't give you the specific answer to that. What I can tell you, I'm going to give you my anecdotal answer, and you can say, thanks, but I don't really care what your anecdote. But I'll just give you my observation. Fifty percent of the kids during their mask break at the high school observed by me. Keep their masks on.
They do.
Their mask break.
Absolutely.
I, I, I actually don't, I actually don't know why either, because I don't know about you folks, but the minute I get an opportunity to go outside and I watch the soccer match today outside by the field, my mask was off, right? I wasn't in close proximity. I was outside. I was so happy just to get outside. But, but Will knows, he also works at a secondary, it's, the kids, it's the routine. They take it. So, so I, I know that doesn't necessarily answer what the piece is, but I do think we're, we're giving them ample opportunity to have some breaks at the secondary level. It's much more flexibility because the kids are moving around and in various areas. And I know classrooms are going outside, so there are opportunities. But I'll follow up with the high school administration in relation to that. Thanks, Mrs. Fox.
Yes.
Sorry, I just have a quick question to take you back on something that Mrs. Barron had asked. Children in the younger grade levels that might receive like an in-classroom snack time period, if one of those children were in a divided group for lunch, would, how would that be handled in that setting?
Yeah, so we'd still have to provide the spacing in those situations as well.
But that was a good question.
And, and it's a good point. We, I, because so much of the conversation, I was, was at the high school. I didn't even take into it, but yes, at the elementary levels where they had, those same rules would apply where the masks were coming off for those breaks. And, and spacing allows for that a little bit because of the size and the numbers of the kids. Good question.
Great. Well, let's move along here. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Silvy, you did not have a question?
I did not.
Anybody else? No? All right. So we're onto reports to committee?
Director, yeah, we're...
Okay, just a few updates here as it relates to our possible MSBA window project for Assawamsted. We have been working with the town of Lakeville and we worked with the MSBA as well on the language and the estimates used to appropriate, to plan on appropriating funds if we are ultimately selected for the schematic design phase. The Lakeville Board of Selectmen will have their special town meeting on November eighth. The Lakeville Board of Selectmen recently voted to support, including, if we are selected, ninety thousand dollars toward the feasibility study. That would be performed by the owner's project manager and the designer. Again, this is pending if Assawamsted Elementary is officially selected. The MSBA will vote on October twenty-seventh, and if we are selected, a formal invitation will follow. And then an update to the train project is also included in your packet. The biggest update is that a zero-cost extension was requested where substantial completion will now be anticipated by November thirtieth. This is mainly due to delays on production and delivery of the condensers for the second-floor unit ventilators at the high school here. But now we are just receiving an update today that they may be delivered sometime next week. Train is also tying up the building controls portion of the project and has begun training on the systems. And the very last segment is where Train will provide to us a deficiency list of failed components, which we will plan on covering if allowable from the S R three American Rescue Plan, if they are indeed HVAC or related components. The project, the Train project is about ninety-five percent complete at this time.
And they have done really well with supply chain issues, which are definitely out there for that. So that no cost thing is not going to be a problem. Question?
My, when will we get our first sort of report on cost savings?
Oh, yeah.
Sure, I can provide that at a future meeting along with some pictures of the project. I think we were anticipating doing that once we were really close to completion and maybe had that failed component list as well.
Sure. Anybody else? Thank you.
You're welcome.
Dr. Clurts?
Good evening.
Thank you.
Good evening. So the Freetown-Lakeville School District has a pretty robust induction and mentoring program from our, for our new teachers on August thirty-first. On August thirtieth, we held our new teacher orientation here in the library. We welcomed twenty new teachers to the district, provided them with some orientation to our programs, our various technologies. We also paired them up with mentors in their fields and that worked in their schools with them so that they can guide them throughout the school year, provide resources for them, somebody that they would meet with and be able to work through anything that comes up being new to the district. On September first, we had our opening day. We held it virtually in each building, which actually was quite a little feat, but the superintendent pulled that off from the auditorium of the high school, projecting out to all of the elementaries, the middle school and grays. There was a, there was a central office person at each school to kind of help facilitate and, and work with the superintendent on that. But I was at Freetown Elementary and everything went great. We, we pretty much did everything we would have done, given out the apples for fifteen years, twenty, twenty-five years. Teachers were very excited. The speech was very motivating. Did a good job.
They liked being in their schools, truth be told. They kind of liked that. So they used to all come here, and it was an opportunity to socialize, but we, safety reasons, didn't want to, felt that was appropriate in the auditorium. And as a result, I think they benefited from being closer to their classrooms potentially as well. I'd like to think it was that they still enjoyed the speech, but I...
I think, yeah, yeah, they did, they did. It was a nice balance. So, and then September second, we had our professional development day. And, and, and that was a little bit differentiated based on grade levels and, and school buildings. That went very well. October eighth is our next professional development day. That's a half-day of professional development. So that, that agenda is being worked on right now. In addition to the ESSA grants that Kara and I have been working on, we also submitted title grants, Title I, II, and IV. And in those title grants, I included paraprofessionals. I'd like to have enough paraprofessionals so that each kindergarten has one dedicated to their, to their classroom. I know there's a concern with, with class sizes and stuff, so this is an attempt to try to get some more support in addition to the interventionist that we put into the ESSA grants. Once we receive approval for these grants, then we can begin hiring these paraprofessionals. Now, I'm also recommending a Title I reading specialist for the middle school, which is a new position. It will be paid for from these title grants. And, and you know, if, if that's something that you would support, then the posting would say that it was a year-only title-funded position. But the middle school is now a title school, and so...
I think that's a significant piece to note. Previously, it had not been considered a Title I.
Right, only the elementaries were flesh... Right, so only the elementaries were. So, so part of this is that it is a moving target as far as, you know, whether you qualify for title or not. However, because of the uniqueness of this year and us trying to really work hard on addressing potential learning loss and catching kids up, trying to get as much instructional support into classrooms is pretty much what we are trying to focus on with these title grants. With the ESSA grants, yes, we did get some interventionists, but the bulk of it is on materials and resources. For the, for the title grants, I'm trying to balance that out with actually getting professional staff who can go in and help. I mean, you know, we would have a ton of resources, but we also need the staff that would, you know, use those resources effectively and provide some support to the teachers. So that is my question to you, is what... So that is my question to you, is what you think of hiring a Title one teacher for the middle school using these grant funds?
So it's a conversation she's already obviously had with the middle school administration, which fully supports this and has a plan in place. So I don't want to think in isolation, the director.
Right, no.
That happens.
Yes.
No, in what in this this position, I'm sure again would be a data-driven decision.
It is.
And that's the right discipline?
Yes, so in talking to the middle school principal, he all he could fill this person's time right now with he already knows with three groups who would work with this and and two groups of students who require this support. So if we did hire, she could immediately start and hit the ground running based on data. This year, as you know, I added.
He or she.
Yeah. He or she. They could.
Well, I just want to make, there wasn't a husband identified individual, but just.
No, yeah, no, no, I have no idea. I mean, if we could even find somebody at this time. I forgot where I was going with that.
No, sorry to throw you.
Well, I had just asked if that was the appropriate discipline, if you had concluded with the leadership team that that's the right direction.
Yes, I know. So this year, the middle school is now involved with iReady. So for the first time, grades six through eight are now benchmarking progress monitoring their students. So we have data now that is also updated periodically so that these interventionists know what they're working on and when they should be working on it. And, you know, we are providing them with some significant high-quality materials to use too. So yes, Mr. Higgins already knows who those students would be. He has, I believe, talked to you in the past about a resource intervention room, an RTI, robust RTI process. So he's already made steps to provide this kind of support for learning loss.
Mrs. Barron? So the grant would fully cover the salary and so forth?
Fully.
Just for a year?
Just for a year.
And then it would be about the following year, we could apply to the same grant?
Which are pretty typical of a Title one.
That's what they are, they're one-year allocations.
Right, they are one-year allocations, but the other good thing about, if there is a good thing, about being in this situation with pandemic is that Desi is allowing us to roll over unspent funds for another year. Because of our shutdown and the hybrid model and stuff that we went through the last couple of years, we did not spend all the money that we would have had we had a a normal year. So there are funds available to us. There are funds available to us, and will be for.
But it's still a finite.
It is still, absolutely, absolutely, yes.
Yes, Mr. Barron. Let me just finish out one last before Steve takes over here. I didn't mean to just cut out that way. So let's say, so I would guess from everything that we know, we probably will be getting some pretty good funding through, we know through 2024, maybe even a little bit further. By that time, that individual would be ready for professional status. Once the the Title one money goes away, and we've seen that happen over and over again, then that position would come into our budget.
Correct.
Is that correct, Cara?
That's correct. We do have some available school choice money. We have built up an equity there. We have a reserve of almost seven hundred thousand coming into the beginning of this year, which could be utilized for something like this, but again, it wouldn't be a long-term plan. We'd have to somehow build that into the budget, knowing that we'd have ebbs and flows of what schools are covered under Title one.
And also an ebb and flow in the need. So in looking at the data, two or three years down the line, they may not need a separate reading specialist in addition to who they already have in their RTI room, their resource room. This is a lot of this now is us trying to really get ahead of a learning loss need and 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 get kids on solid ground with their curriculum, with their grade-level curriculum.
Good to make, Cecilia?
I guess it's really, sorry, yes, well, Sherry tipped me off.
Sorry, I just didn't finish.
I guess I'm just getting split here between the ESSR and then the grant, where the ESSR could potentially be longer term, not super long term, where this is one year.
That's correct.
But I assume there's some consideration, they're sort of, they sound like similar positions in some way.
The other thing is, this would be advertised as a one-year-only grant-funded position. So the person knowing knows that on June thirtieth, 2022, this position goes away. If we get the funding for it, would you like to reapply? Sure, but it's not a, oh, now we own them, you know, the if, you know.
It's more complimentary is what I'm understanding. So the ESSR grant provides all these materials. It has been determined that the middle school is title.
Yes.
So and you also had the discussions that say the reading specialist is would be beneficial, given the slides we've had, that that complements what you're bringing in for materials with ESSR through the title program. Also, you don't want to not apply for title.
Correct. I think it's just the the use of the funds. And and obviously, I support any interventionist and supportive positions that come in, especially over the last, to assess the impact.
Yeah, and those, Steve, to your point, I think you're you're hitting exactly what happens next door to me in Pat's office. Karen and Pat have been discussing how to allocate those funds over multi-year and use it properly and.
Yeah, balance out. Professional staff along with high-quality curriculum material, you know.
Yeah, so essentially, it's the use of funds for the longest amount of time.
Where are we putting this and where are we putting that?
Yep.
Yeah, following the parameters of both of these grants, I can put people in here, and we can put resources in there.
Yep, now it's Mr. Owens.
Yeah, I I think they've touched a point. I just would welcome the creativity in how we fund them, right? I'm always nervous about funding salary through grants. I think we've done a great job in the last couple of years about identifying that this salary is covered by us, or we're transparent with the towns. If we can use them by school choice, because that's what the school choice fund is done, I would welcome that. It's always tough in a one-year, you know what I mean, trying to tell these principals who've done well with this. I'm sure they're going to do their best salesmanship on why they still need that role. And I would welcome it, don't get me wrong. I do think we need to do, I I just, I'm always just nervous about the funding aspect of it. And we're now taking it away, and it's a very important piece, and that's been something that we, as a district, have just struggled in years past.
Especially with title grants, that's what happens with that.
As long as we keep that in check, you know what I mean.
But those are conversations that Cara and I have when we've been working through this, is if this happens, then what? Now, what are we going to do? How do we support this, or does it go away?
You got flow charts all over the office.
Well, we have had some robust conversations, just trying to plot out the effective use of all of this coming our way to make sure it benefits the kids to the best that it can and that we end up giving a really high-quality education to our kids here for the next couple of years and beyond. You know, we put that we put the district in a good place.
Yes, and that's the plan here, but it sounds like I don't hear anybody against this plan. You're not looking for a vote, you just want a consensus.
Yeah, I just, I, Pat, just because as you see a new position posted, even though it's grant-funded, it sometimes triggers you folks to understand where it's coming from.
So and I and I appreciate that, I really do. So, yeah, I I hear no opposition to that proposal at all on this committee. I think by consensus, we can say we're very supportive.
Okay, so we can move forward with that?
Yep.
Okay, perfect, and then.
As long as it lives within the confines of our budget. Very good, right?
Understood.
Right, 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 right. Thank you.
And then just the last thing is that MCAP data has been released. Parents will receive their reports on Sep, will be going out on September thirtieth. A little bit different this year, the the MCAP was, yes?
I just tomorrow. Well, they're not, they may not, and Desi's supposed to give us those.
Yes.
So I just caution people that, anybody who's lived with Desi knows that that's, they'll most likely will go out to families in that community the following week. Sorry.
They're releasing to parents.
To parents, correct.
Okay, let me rephrase, yes.
I thought I I saw some, it's really thinking here, okay, that's tomorrow, so great, we'll be getting those parents. I just wanted to make sure we clarified that. Thanks, sorry, Pat.
Right, hey, no problem. So so I attended a webinar on on the reporting of this data. And they, Desi does stress that this is a diagnostic result, that we shouldn't be comparing schools, that we shouldn't be comparing districts to other districts. They did say we could use these results for inferencing. They have given us a comparison from 2019 to 2021. 2020, there was no test, so 2019 was the last time the kids took the test based on a normal year. They changed the way they calculated the growth percentile, the student growth percentile, because there really weren't enough items that the kids took to make the the rationale for what they had done in the past, because the kids only took half of the test. So they changed the mean. So now the mean is thirty, and they're telling us that if we see percentile scores in fifties and sixties, that we should consider those that strong, a strong number, where before it would have been, you know, just hitting the middle. They also have guides and frequently asked questions on their site that they said may help parents as they start to look at their students' reports.
And we'll supply that information for the committee.
Yeah.
Question? Everybody's not excited about that.
No, I know, no, I know.
All right, does that complete your report?
That does complete my report, thank you.
I appreciate it, and Ms. Carlin?
Thank you, good evening. On September second, the Office of Student Services provided professional development to all the special education teachers, related service providers, school psychologists, and adjustment counselors in preparation for the upcoming school year. The department reviewed procedures and priorities for for the 2122 school year as well. On a positive note, the district has hired Susan Clancy, Dr. Clancy of Plymouth, as our new school psychologist to replace the vacancy at the middle school. Dr. Clancy, as you recall, worked for us last year as a contracted service provider, so we know her work to be exemplary, and she has already started on board. We also had another round of interviews and are in the finalized finalizing stages of reference and credentialing checked for the fiscal year 22 budgeted position. So I'll be preparing that for Mr. Maderis actually this week. The vacancy at the occupational therapy position has been covered, and we are able to provide all of those services through South Coast Collaborative as well. So that is good news on our staffing outlook right there. On the topic of grants, we've also been busy with our grants. I set forward for you just a kind of general comparison from fiscal year eighteen to twenty-two on our funding amounts. As you can see, the there are two new grants. That's the ARP as it relates to, for the 252, the IDEA supplemental funds, and the 264, which is for students with disabilities and the recovery of impact of the learning loss, as well as to safely reopen schools and sustain safe operations. In terms of pulling from content, it will be the same survey data that's tied in through ESSA. This is just the way that the grants were submitted for that, the ed grants overview. Last week, I attended a a webinar on a new grant that has just come up also under ARP. This one is designated specifically for McKinney-Vento homeless students. The RFP has not been posted yet, but is due in the next week or ten, will be out in the next week or ten days. We'll also have the parameters and guidelines. Good news is that the the federal government has set a minimum entitlement amount at five thousand dollars. So we know just despite not having a large homeless population, the minimum we'll receive is five thousand dollars. And also of interest, one of the permissible uses is to offset transportation spending from that population. So whatever our exact amount is for that, we we probably already have it covered and spent, so that will be a nice offset. In terms of our regular IDEA and early childhood grants, we're able to support a number of of staff, professional development, additional materials, supplies, and contracted services from that as well. And lastly, on to family engagement and CPAC. The next scheduled CPAC business meeting will be a week from tonight, October sixth, at six thirty. It will be live and in person in the Group Projects Room, which is off off this room, up of the library. And this will also be the annual Board of Directors election and serve as the rights and responsibility in special education presentation as well. And lastly, I have updated the out-of-district census, which remains steady and constant.
I can't believe this transportation from McKinney-Vento. How many years have we done that? That's, I mean, that's amazing.
Something we've always been required, obviously, to do.
Obviously, so that's that's very good news. Thank you for your report. Any questions? Ms. Carlin?
Thank you.
Okay, um, thank you. Yes, go ahead.
Any objection to cutting down this list to just include the last school year from a data perspective?
Not for me. Anybody on the committee?
So we'll just do the last school year and then let that drop off that way. I'm sure we'll save a few frees on that last one, but.
You know, I had actually raised the font in my report for some reason, this one back, that was, yes, I will, I will.
I appreciate the raising of the font, doesn't it?
It's just, yeah, really, so.
I completely understand.
That's a good idea, actually, yeah, thank you. Thank you for your report. Okay, item nine, subcommittee updates, regional FinCon?
Nothing.
Nothing. Superintendent Tavell?
Nothing.
We don't have an.
Wellness, health, Ms. Barron? All right, the Wellness Committee met with nurses, principal, and Mr. Maderis on September twenty first. Lori Damaris, from our public health nurse for Lakeville and Freetown, stated that Freetown-Lakeville had, Freetown had thirty-four cases as of September twenty first. For children who were zero to eighteen years old, fifty-six cases in Lakeville, zero to eighteen years old. But her quote that I particularly wanted to mention was she said all are asymptomatic or or have very mild symptoms, which I think is very important for us to know that our our students are are not getting very sick. There were two vaccination clinics, approximately thirty participants. That's about it for me. Thank you for the update. Oh, no, I'm sorry, and Ms. Lee's forwarded me the information on the grants that have been presented in the last year.
That's correct.
Thirty thousand dollars?
Thirty thousand dollars, ten thousand dollars from our MIA Health Insurance Trust. They had provided us a grant for AED devices, and twenty thousand dollars from the state school health grant. Normally, we get a five thousand dollar allocation. They upped it to twenty thousand. And I do have a summary of the uses here. Nine thousand four hundred and thirty-three dollars for hearing and vision screening equipment. We used approximately five thousand dollars toward technology equipment to support updated charting needs for the nurses. Twenty-seven hundred dollars for PPE. Five hundred and eighty-nine dollars to purchase two additional hydration stations for our school. We had about nine hundred and sixty dollars between some substitute contract, contact tracing personnel costs and professional development provided to nurses. And then about four hundred dollars for a wheelchair, and then nine hundred dollars towards various supplies. There were some cabinets that were needed by the nurses, tampon dispensers, et cetera. Two total twenty thousand dollars.
That that's pretty nice. Where are the AEDs?
Two in each school.
How many?
Two in each school.
Oh, good to know. There is also another ten thousand dollars from M I I A available this year, so I'm looking. I've been asked, and and the nurses are brainstorming some ideas or requests. So if you have any ideas on what we might be able to to admit.
So that grant normally will support all employees who theoretically all employees are contributing to the Health Benefits Trust. So typically, they like to do programs that support.
support employees in general. That's why the AEDs fit in nicely. But they are entertaining other ideas that we can pass along to them as well. Cara, do we have hydration systems in all schools now? I don't know if they're in all schools. I know we have looked at doing it, and I know that there is some possible plumbing complications in different locations. So it's an ongoing conversation that we're having with all the principals and the facilities director.
Okay. Yes.
Related to that MIA, can, so talk about wellness, can this be extended to athletic training, consumables, or anything like that?
I know, I don't know about consumables. I know they mentioned like fitness equipment, but that would have to be open to employees, for example.
Okay.
Yeah, so if you have any specific ideas, please let me know. I'd be happy to consult with the MIA representatives to see what their thoughts are.
So just to make sure that people, we're not talking about the Interscholastic Athletic Association, we're talking about our health, our health insurance provider.
Right. It's MIA, is it?
I'm sorry?
Is it MIA?
Correct.
Not MIA?
Yes, the Massachusetts Insurance Interlokal Association.
Association.
I believe.
So, can I ask you a few questions on this?
Sure.
I'm sure everyone has read this, but in particular, I think it's just a yes from you, related to the fraud policy and the SODs. Is that something that we're going to be focusing on this year?
I believe we should. I think, my understanding is that these have been comments that have been kicking around for quite some time.
Yeah.
So I've already spoken to our new district accountant, and I plan on addressing these, even if we can get one off the list in a year or so, to sort of get this list down.
Dang, the fraud policy has been on this letter for-
Several years.
Yeah, so definitely the SODs would be something we need to, to do that. So, okay.
We can do that. Did you have another question?
Nope.
Because I'm going to item D.
There were the two bullet points, and she answered both of them.
Which is, we have a meeting, right? The Freetown Vocational Subcommittee, that's set up for next week.
So, so Town of Freetown has requested that the vocational group present, give them an update on Bristol Plymouth and the Freetown students. Snkowitz and Fox represent the subcommittee. From the school committee perspective, I'll be in, in attendance. I've already reached out to the VP, so pretending I can't be there, but we'll have an update for the town showing support and where we're heading relative to future membership.
Yes, that's fair. We have an interim town administrator.
It is, it is, they are, it is, it is in a virtual meeting, it is at the police station, in the community room.
Right, right, in the community room.
I plan to be there.
Okay, good.
Next Wednesday.
Is, is the timetable that we would potentially have something in place as, you know, Freetown being a member town for Bristol Plymouth by the end of the year? I know that it's a coordination effort with all the other member towns.
Exactly, everybody has to vote us in, so, yeah, that's hopefully the plan.
Okay.
But, good question. So just want to mention, tomorrow, it looks like ASLAM's at open house with, with book fair, is that correct?
Tomorrow night, that is correct.
All right.
That is from 5:30 to 7:30.
5:30, 7:30, the 8th, that's what's mentioned earlier, is a PD day, is early dismissal, October 8th, and then the 11th is the Columbus Day, or whatever we call that, Indigenous People's Day holiday.
I, I don't want to stand in the way of the German, but I do have one quick request, if I could, under other, Mrs. Fox.
Yes.
So, in, typically, any donation that is made comes for the school committee. I don't want this to, to sit, and I'll explain why. Director of Facility, we're in the process of upgrading our cafeteria tables. Much of them are surplus and are being thrown away.
Right.
In, in, in the process, several homeless shelters and Catholic charities have reached out to us within New Bedford and have requested, after visibly seeing them, that they would like to access that. So it is my recommendation, supported by our rubbish disposal contractor, that we allow the donation of some of our cafeteria tables, which were going to be discarded, to go to local, local homeless shelters in New Bedford and Catholic charities. So I, I apologize, it's not in the agenda, but that comes from the Director of Facilities.
No, that's fine. How many tables are we talking about? Because if it's, I mean, you might, there might be other outreach you could do, I'm just questioning. Mrs. Barron has a question.
Shouldn't, could we consider asking our, our towns first if they have any needs for them before you send them out?
We have some additional cafeteria tables, so then I, when I, then I was seeing all-
So they're not all going to New Bedford.
Yeah, that's a small percentage, but we can reach out to the towns and see if there are other departments that may want to acquire. I can have Cara follow up with Greg. But this, approving this donation does, will not deplete the, the tables and availability for access to the town.
No, it's a good, it's a very good purpose, a second repurposing of them. Yes, Mr. Owen?
I'm looking for the right word. It's not really a donation, but we, we basically have a list of-
The surplus items.
The surplus items. So is that what we, we need to do, is just vote the surplus items, so that way you have the capability of doing what we need, and taking Ms. Barron's suggestion, let's check with the local town before we then go from there?
If you designate them as surplus, then we would have the ability to do that.
Yeah, so I think that's the word to take.
I think that's the right way to do it, unless you have an objection to that.
No, most of them have been, haven't been going in the trash, because we didn't feel there's any purpose to them, but, so, yeah.
Yeah, there was no redeeming quality left, no surprise.
But those that remain, I would say, yes, could be designated as surplus, then we could identify, there we go.
Then let's just do that.
So I will make a motion to do any remaining cafeteria tables to be marked as surplus.
For distribution as appropriate. Okay, motion, do I have a second?
Second.
And a second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
The only thing I wanted to-
No, no, to, to Mrs. Barron's point, this will allow us to make, make sure we reach out to the towns.
Check us out. I thought that was part of-
This motion will be inclusive of that.
All in favor?
Aye.
By any opposed, any extension? Do you have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Thank you, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.